Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Thousand Oaks for August 24, 2020. We are going to initially say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, could you please read the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Bus?
President.
Commissioner Kohan?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Chair Lanson?
And I am here. And I want to let everybody know, I did actually come in with my mask. I'm taking it off now for purposes of understanding me. I heard I actually am a little bit quiet to understand with the mask on, but I do have it and do wear it wherever we go. And you're not seeing now, but most everybody is wearing a mask when they come and go, and I would suggest all of you do as well. Mr. Parker, any written comments, announcements, supplemental packets, or continuances?
Thank you Chair. We actually have two supplemental packets this evening. One relates to Item 7A on the agenda, the other to Item 7B. Additionally, there has been a request for a continuance for Item 7B on the agenda.
Okay. Recording Secretary, do we have any actual regular public comments? I don't think we do. No public speakers?
No.
Okay. So we will go to the case number six, the Consent Calendar. We have the Consent Calendar with the minutes from the April 20, 2020 meeting. Amazing to think we haven't been here for four months. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Bus. Will the Secretary please prepare us for a vote?
I believe it'll be a voice vote. Commissioner Bus?
Aye.
Commissioner Kohan?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Lanson?
Yes. And that is approved. Next, we'll move on to Item 7. We're going to take them a little bit out of order. We're going to do 7B first. Will the clerk please open the public hearing on 7B?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7B, Appeal of Development Permit Minor Modification Number DPMN 2020-70184. Appellant is requesting the Planning Commission reverse the administrative decision approving DPMN 2020-70184, thereby denying the request to upgrade an existing wireless communications facility located at 1 Amgen Center Drive, B27. The appellant is Mandy Jacob, and the applicant is New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company by AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation, its manager.
Thank you, Ms. Gore. I've been advised the city received a request this morning from the appellant's attorney, Mark Pollak, for continuance of tonight's hearing because Mr. Pollak has informed us that he lives and practices law in Napa County, which is near the fires and emergency issues that are going on up there. Evacuation orders are actually in effect in many parts of the county or directly impacting him. Based on this unfortunate and dangerous development, he asked for a continuance. Obviously, we don't want to have him not be a part of this process, and obviously, he's dealing with a very important emergency that he has to deal with. I'm advised staff has communicated to both the appellant and the applicant and recommends that we continue this matter to a date specific, which is September 21, 2020, which is our next meeting, to accommodate this sudden development. And to that extent, I would ask one of my commissioners to make a motion with regard to that continuance for a date specific to September 21, 2020.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Any other comments from commissioners? So go ahead, Ms. Secretary, and prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Bus?
Aye.
Commissioner Kohan?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
So, any comments, information, anything that would be presented as part of this hearing will now go forward on September 21, 2020. Any members of the public that would like to be involved in that hearing, follow the typical guidelines you would have on the city's website with regard to being involved in any Planning Commission hearing, as if that hearing took place today. Just make sure that you get the information, whether it's written comments or being part of this Zoom presentation. But again, that hearing is now going to be on September 21, 2020. Let's go on to Item 7A. Ms. Clerk, will you please open the public hearing?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A, Continuance of Special Use Permit Number SUP 2009-70409, Oak Tree Permit Number OTP 2011-7018, I'm sorry, 64, 70164, and Landmark Tree Permit Number LTP 2018-70271, to allow the construction of a self-storage building with encroachment within 25% or greater natural slope, removal of one oak tree, and encroachment within the protected zones of three other oak trees, and removal of one toion tree located at 2650 Willow Lane. The applicant is James Sandifer.
And I understand the staff presentation will be by Associate Planner Will Chua.
Good evening, Chair Lanson, members of the commission. For your consideration tonight are the previously mentioned applications wherein the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow encroachment within 25% or greater natural slope for the construction of a self-storage facility. In conjunction with this application is a request to remove one oak tree, an encroachment within the protected zones of three others, and the removal of one toion tree. Sorry, I forgot to move the slides. The project site is located on the south side of the 101 freeway. The 101 freeway is this line being shown by the arrow. The project site is identified by the asterisks. It's located on the south side of the 101 freeway, and it's on Willow Lane between Conejo School Road and Hampshire Road. This is the aerial photo of the project site. Conejo Ridge is to the west, the 101 freeway to the north, Willow Lane, obviously here at the front, and Skyline Drive to the west, or to the east, I'm sorry. There are three utility poles on the property that will be removed, and the utilities would be undergrounded. The 25% or greater slope occurs on a minor area here and around this area of the property. The adjacent uses on the property, on the west side is another storage, self-storage facility. To the north is a mobile home park across from the 101 freeway, and a nursery school to the east adjacent to the property, and some vacant residential lots on the north, south side of the property. Please note that there are single-family homes being proposed on this area on the property, which will be coming to the Planning Commission before the Planning Commission in the near future. This is a view of the project site from the southbound side of the 101 freeway. The project site is identified by this power pole that's located on the property. Here's a closer view of the site from the same side of the freeway. This time, two of the poles are visible. This is a view of the freeway from the north side of the 101 freeway, and the project site is located here, identified where the power poles are. The next slide is the site and grading plans for the project. The oak tree number five, which is the one proposed for removal, is located right here in the middle. The highest point on the property is about 996 feet. The other oak trees, three other oak trees are located on the same property, oak trees numbers two, three, and four. On oak trees, within the protected zones of oak tree numbers two and three are the existing single-family home structures, sheds, driveways, and retaining walls that will be removed. The one of the off-site tree that will be affected by this project is oak tree number one, which is along, located down on Willow Lane, which will be encroached upon by a proposed retaining wall along the front of the property. There will be a double retaining wall along the front, going down into about 100 feet into the driveway. Another retaining wall will be installed on the south end, on the east end of the property, going towards, from the north to the, going to the back. This shows the proposed elevations for the project. The top figure shows the rear of the building and the existing finished grade of the project, of the project site. The rest of them shows the west, east, and elevations. The building design introduced some vertical and horizontal features such as four towers, cornices, roof elements, and windows. The materials will consist of brown stucco in different shades, some rock materials, and brick for the towers. This slide shows the roof plan, which is pretty much flat, and the third and second floor plans. Surrounding land uses, as mentioned earlier, to the north is the 101 freeway, on the east is the Nursery Daycare, and to the south are the vacant lots, and to the west would be the existing self-storage facility. The project site is zoned M1. As mentioned earlier, there are three residences on the property and other structures like retaining walls and sheds. There are five oak trees, five protected trees, protected trees on site, four oaks and one toion, and one off-site oak tree. There are three utility poles on the project site that will be removed. In 2009, a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from residential to M1, and a zone change application from RE to M1 were initiated to change the land use designations, basically, along with the special use permit for the office building, which was originally proposed. In 2004, the land use was, the general plan amendment and the zone change were approved and were adopted, and the land use was changed from residential to industrial, and the zoning was changed from RE to M1. In 2018, there was a change of ownership on the property. The new owner, who's now the current applicant, modified the request from 2009 from a medical office building to a self-storage building. In March 18 of last year, the Planning Commission considered the request. The commission voted 5-0 to continue the hearing, to give the applicant the opportunity to address the issues that were brought out by staff in relations to silhouetting, grading, visual interest and impact, facade exposure, building scale, and massing. Staff and the applicant met at least eight times and had numerous correspondences and phone discussions on how to address staff's concern. As a result of all these meetings and discussions, the applicant made substantial changes that are acceptable to staff. The following tables will show you the columns on the issues brought up by staff, the action taken by the applicant, and whether the action was acceptable or not. The first two issues are silhouetting and grading. For silhouetting, to address the silhouetting issue, the applicant reduced the height of the building from 36 feet to, down to 27 feet. The building was reduced by 10 feet on the west side, which increased the side, that side area to 20 feet to provide enough room for large trees to be installed or planted, and that will reduce visibility from the south side of the 101 freeway. As for the grading, the applicant indicated that it is necessary to lower the pad to comply with the Public Works driveway grade standards. Grading will require an export of 32,500 cubic yards of dirt with an estimated 2,250 truck trips. The lowered pad in combination with the reduced building height will lessen the overall visibility of the building. So these two conditions, or these two actions taken by the applicant, are acceptable to staff. The next two issues are visual interest and visual impact. The third floor of the building was reduced and stepped back by 15 feet from the second floor. You will see this in one of the following slides in the line of site study. The applicant introduced four towers and windows, stuccos, stucco materials and brick materials to provide visual interest to the building to address the visual interest issue. As far as visual impact, as mentioned earlier, the side setback was increased to 20 feet to provide for ample landscaping for planting of large matured trees. The next two issues are facade exposure and building scale. So this, the facade exposure was already, was addressed when, by moving the, by recessing the third floor. The portion of the building on the west and the east sides were stepped back to reduce the facade's visibility from the 101 freeway, kind of step it back. Large trees will be planted along the front of the property to be, to reduce, to further reduce the visibility from the 101 freeway. As for the building being too tall in buildings, on building scale, the building, as we mentioned earlier, was reduced to three stories, and the third floor have been stepped back. Now, the last three issues are building massing, discouraged elements, and parking. For building massing, the building used to have a flat finish. This time, the applicant introduced some architectural features like four windows, towers, roof features, that provides articulation to the building. Discouraged element, the building before was box-in design and in need of architectural character, with the introduction of various materials like stucco, stone, and brick. This issue was addressed accordingly, in addition to adding cornices, roof elements, and four towers, which add character to the building. As far as the parking concerned, the original proposed parking spaces, the original proposed building square footage was 101,000 square feet. It's been now reduced to 84,000 square feet, which now requires 21 parking spaces. And I would like to take this opportunity to make a correction on the condition, condition number one, I'm sorry, condition number 21, which indicates that the parking, number parking spaces will, is 23, that should be changed down to 21, and staff will be making those changes if the commission approves this project.
Mr. Chua, which condition was that?
Condition number 21 of SUP 0970. That would be attachment, I believe, 7A of the staff report?
Thank you.
The following slides would present the photo simulations or renderings for the proposed building. As you can see, the original building has the third floor not recessed from the building. It has a monochromatic finish of using gray split, split stone, dark and light gray. So that's what it looks like originally as presented. This new one presents a project with a brown tone on it. It's got stucco finish, brick materials, cornices, full roof, windows, and stepping back of the building from horizontally, making it, giving it a horizontal breakup and vertical breakup as well. This is the line of site study, the previous line of site study that was presented to staff. The line of study, here's my arrow from the 101 freeway, is this following my arrow. This is the portion that was previously visible from the 101 freeway. With the new change to the design, this is what's going to be exposed, the third floor, the fourth floor of the building has been removed, the third floor, which was here, up to the second floor here, was stepped back. So the visibility of the building was reduced with stepping back the building and reducing it by a single floor, by one floor. This is the original rendering for the building. This is the proposed rendering, as you can see, it's lower. And the next slide will show, I'm sorry, will show the building, what the building's going to look like when the proposed landscaping has matured. This next slide here is a current rendering of the proposed project, viewing it from the 101 freeway, with the rendering showing the proposed landscaping upon maturing. Excuse me. The project was evaluated against the city's development, applicable development standards. Parking, the first column is the development standard, the second column is the required, the minimum or the maximum required, the proposed, and then the third column will be the proposed, and the fourth column, whether it complies or not. As far as parking is concerned, they're providing, the minimum required is 21, they're proposing 21, so it complies.
Mr. Chua, I would just, at that point, say that according to the staff report, that's paragraph 24 of the staff report. It says 23, and you're indicating 21 is acceptable, right?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Building height, the maximum height for an M1 zone is 35 feet. The average building height, in this case, we calculate the height because the building sits on a different grade level. So the average height, calculated height is 26.7 feet. Yes, and yes, it complies. For the front setback, the front setback is measured from the center line of the adjacent street for M1 zone. That would be 100 feet minimum. They propose this 151 feet and 10 inches, and yes, it complies. The left and the rear minimum setbacks are 10 feet. They propose are 40 feet and 10 feet respectively. Now, on the right side, which is the west side, the reason why we have the 10-foot minimum on the left and the rear sides are because those sides are adjacent to a residential area, and the municipal code requires a 10-foot minimum. For the right side, which is the west side, adjacent to another industrial use, the minimum setback is zero feet. However, they provide a 20-foot wide setback to provide for landscaping. The building coverage minimum for M1 zone is 50%. The applicant is proposing a 32% building coverage. As far as grading is concerned, I've discussed this grading, and the pad will be lowered by about 20 feet. The grading activity requires Planning Commission approval because of the greater, the 25% or greater slope. That slope is insignificant because of the fact that it's a remnant of a previous activity, and that this slope is not visible from the 101 freeway. As far as the manufactured slope, the minimum, the maximum slope limit is two-to-one slope, which is for every two horizontal run, that's, there should be a one vertical run, and that's the maximum slope allowed without approval by the Planning Commission. In this case, a one-two-and-a-half, one-and-a-half-to-one ratio on the small portion of, on the west side for grade transition is being proposed. The Planning Commission may grant the waiver if the applicant can certify that the slope is stable and can be landscaped, and that, and that the engineer or, and their consultant can certify that the slope can be, will be stable and can be planted. In this case, staff is supporting this one-and-a-half-to-one ratio, because without this one-and-a-half-to-one ratio, approximately 12-foot-high maximum wall will be, will be required along that portion of the property, which is not visually pleasing. As mentioned earlier, there are varying heights of retaining wall along the north side of the property, which is the front of the property. This is a two-tiered wall that varies from one-and-a-half to two feet, down to two feet. This is on the west side, the lowest, the lowest height of the walls will occur along the termini of these retaining walls on the driveway and the west side of the building along Willow Lane. The tiered walls will have a maximum of six foot high. This is the proposed landscape plans. That's, as you can see, the proposed landscape plan is heavily planted with large trees, 24-inch box trees along the front, which has exposure, and along the side. This is the area of the building where it was reduced down by 10 feet to allow for matured landscaping. Oak tree permits. There are two tree permits proposed, the oak tree and the landmark tree permits. The oak tree permit is requesting the removal of oak tree number five, which is centrally located on the property. The property cannot be developed without the removal of this oak tree because of the small size of the available pad for... because of the small size of the available pad for, for, for development. There will be encroachment within the protected zones of three oak trees, as mentioned earlier. One, there will be, the oak tree number one, which is on the right-of-way, will be encroached upon by the retaining wall. Staff considered this a minor encroachment, and we're, we're supporting it because the option, if no encroachment is approved, would be a 12-foot-high, a single 12-foot-high retaining wall, which is less aesthetically pleasing. The encroachment, the other two encroachment will occur within the protected zones of oak trees numbers two and three, where existing residences, sheds, retaining walls, and driveways would be removed. Staff is, has included conditions to make sure that these two oak trees are protected during those, during demolition of those structures. The landmark tree permit is requested to remove one toion tree. This toion tree is located along the existing driveway on the property. However, with the new driveway, this would be located, centrally located within that driveway, and there's no way to provide a driveway that complies with the public works requirement without removing this, this toion tree. So removal of this toion tree is supported by staff as well. This table provides the sizes, the trunk size, the species, the health rating, and the location, and the impacts of the proposed project to the onsite and offsite oak tree. Oak tree number one is the valley oak, which is located in the right-of-way. It's a two-trunk tree, it's in poor condition, and it's located, as I said, in the line of, right-of-way. This oak tree will however be saved, and the only impact to this tree would be the second retaining wall that would be installed along the Willow Lane. The other four oak trees are all onsite, and they're all coast live oak. Three of them, two of them are multi-trunk. The four and five are seven and inches, seven and 20-inch, single trunk. And they vary in health conditions from good, between good and fair. Oak tree numbers two and three will be saved, and the encroachment would be, work would comprise of demolition of structures within the protected zone. Oak tree number four will not be affected. Oak tree number 20, I'm sorry, oak tree number five has a 20-inch trunk and will be removed. This is the one that's centrally located on the property. And oak tree, and tree number six would be the toion tree, which has diameters that varies from one to six inches. This is a picture of the proposed oak tree for removal. This is a view of the project site looking north from the south side of the property. This is the picture of the toion tree that's adjacent to the existing driveway. However, this driveway would be relocated where this oak tree now would be placed in the middle of that driveway. As far as mitigation trees, in accordance with our oak tree protection and preservation guidelines, for every oak tree that's removed, three oak trees are required for replacement. The normal replacement ratio is two 24-inch box and one 36-inch box. For this case, staff is recommending, because of the significant size of the tree, 20 inches, we are recommending a 60-inch box tree as a replacement instead of the 36-inch box. The applicant is aware of this, and the applicant accepts this condition. As far as the toion replacement is concerned, there are no box oak, toion trees available that will match the size of the toion tree that's being approved for, being considered for removal. So in place of that, staff is recommending six 15, 15-gallon toion trees instead. For environmental review, this project is reviewed against categorical exemption 32, class 32, which is section 15332, under infield development of CEQA. The site is consistent with the general plan designation because it's now designated as industrial use, and it occurs within city limits, and the project site has, is less than five acres. There are no endangered, or this site is not a habitat or does not serve as a habitat for endangered or rare or threatened species listed under the California's endangered species. The approval of this project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality because of the nature of the self-storage use. The site can be served by all required utilities and public services. So staff finds that this project is exempt under class 32 categorical exemption. The new design complies with the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code and the applicable city policies. Removal and the toy, of the oak and the toion trees would allow concern, reasonable and conforming use of the property. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolutions to approve SUP 09, 200970409, OTP 2011-70164, and LTP 2018-70271. And that concludes staff's presentation for this project, and staff is available for questions that the commissioners may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. I think, before we get to questions, I think Commissioner Kohan had a comment.
Yes, thank you, Chair Lanson. Before we begin, I want to let everyone know that my employer prepared a technical study for this proposed project. So as an abundance of caution, I'll be excusing myself from this agenda item. Thank you.
Understood, thank you, Commissioner Kohan. Now, to the other commissioners, is there questions of staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chu, you had mentioned that the properties to the south are being proposed by developer for property, for homes, residential homes. Is that correct?
Yes. There will be four single-family homes being proposed behind that, on the south side of the property.
Does the developer, is he aware of what is being proposed for this site? In case he wanted to make some comments or offer some, you know, reservations about it?
Yes, he is well aware of it. As a matter of fact, they have granted easement for the applicant to perform the required brush clearance if needed. So, yes, they are, he is aware of it.
Okay, so then it won't, he doesn't feel it will affect him adversely, obviously?
I have not heard any comment from him against or pro, for this project, so.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the commissioners? I'll take my turn then, and have a quick one. Back to the easement issue, I believe, one, the, one of the empty lots we actually approved within a year or two ago to build on that site. And I think at that time, one of the discussion was, is, is maintenance of some of that areas above it, if my memory serves correctly. So, this applicant would have the obligation to weed for that, what, 90 feet?
Yes, that's about 90 feet, because the building is about 10 feet away from the property line, and that would be included as part of the landscape plans. When they come in for a landscape plan check, that's one of the items that we're going to be looking at.
If I remember correctly, that owner needed to dig into the hillside a lot to do a swale and some other things, will that affect the weeding that this applicant needs to do?
I believe that's, if I could remember it right, the applicant's name was Moses on that property? That, that is further down south on South Skyline, I'm sorry, South Skyline, and it's not anywhere close to this property. This is much lower on Skyline, and these properties are on, on the, the four lots that are being proposed are on the top of the hill.
Okay, I just would try to make sure juxtaposition that we know exactly who's maintaining what as to that area. All right. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Newman.
Mr. Chu, thank you for your report, and especially for the table that showed where the application was out of spec before and is now in compliance, that was very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Today, we got a letter in opposition, this is in packet two, from a Mr. Bauer stating concern about how narrow Willow Lane is and saying there might be problems getting trucks in and out of this facility. Is it the city's position that with the proposed changes that there is adequate space and there's no traffic issue getting trucks on or off this property?
The, for your information, as part of this project, Mr. Nader Heyder is here tonight. This project would be in line with the city's proposed public works capital improvement to widen the streets up to 36 feet. In, in relation to traffic, as far as maybe truck routing is concerned, that would be handled during the grading plan, plan check. They will be designating the locations of, staging locations for trucks. Mr. Brad Basel is here, and Brad, you can chime in if I say anything that's not accurate? Or Mr. Heyder is, nothing is said, so I guess I'm saying it right, right? Thank you.
Okay, so the city's position, I'm not trying to get into the traffic part, that's someone else's department. But, but with regard to the design in this application, the city's position is that there is adequate space with this design to get trucks on and off of Willow Lane. Is that, is that a correct statement?
I would say yes.
Okay, great. While we're on the subject of cars and, and traffic and all, the revised application brings the number of parking spaces into spec by adding some more parking spaces. I have a hypothetical question for you. There is no, there is no specific code or zoning requirement that covers self-storage facilities. But we, the commission, do have the power to waive the parking space requirement. So my question is this, is, as currently constituted, we're chopping down the largest tree, largest oak tree on the property, is there another configuration for the building that would perhaps require fewer parking spaces, but be able to keep that, that large tree?
Unfortunately not, I'm trying to go back to the grading or site plan to show you how the building is oriented on the property. Okay, so, this is the property, and I will be tracing the property lines by my arrow here. So, the area for the building, the proposed building, is right here. This is the outline for the floor plan of the building. As you can see, the oak tree is located right here towards the middle of the property, and there's no feasible way of reconfiguring any or removing any parking space, or moving the building up or down to, to be able to save this oak tree. So the answer to your question, unfortunately, is not. We would like to save the tree, but there's no way to save it, unfortunately, so.
Okay, thank you. Also on trees, condition 31 requires, as you mentioned, 24 and 36 and 60-inch box or, or larger evergreen trees. And it also says that this number will include mitigation trees from the oak, the oak tree permit, landmark tree permit. So, two questions about that. Number one, are oaks considered evergreens?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay. So moving on then, there, there are photo simulations show that the, the, these replacement trees substantially will cover the building. And my question on that is, how many years will it take these box trees to grow to the height shown in the photo simulation?
I really can't tell you that, unfortunately. Would say probably about 10 years, depending on how much water we get, because, you know, so.
All right, but certainly on day one, it's not, it's not going to look like the picture presented in the photo simulation.
Definitely not.
Okay, and, and because of that, will the building be visible from the 101 freeway and from Willow Lane?
Most likely, but the, the, when we do the, the landscape review for this, that's why in my staff report, I pointed out that this is not what the, the final landscaping would look like. What it is, is we will have our oak tree consultant, or our landscape consultant, to strategically place the trees wherein it will provide the maximum coverage at the time that the tree is growing. So it's not going to be perfect, but we will try our best.
Moving on to the grading that's involved here. You mentioned in your report, there are 32,500 cubic yards of cut here, and that's 2,250 truck trips, correct?
Yes.
What will the haul route be? Willow Lane's pretty narrow at this point, I understand it's being widened, but, but how will those 2,250 trucks full of dirt get in and out of the area?
Well, there will not be, there will be certain number of trucks each day, and they will not be hauling, you know, all this debris the same day. Public Works will provide staging area for the trucks so that they won't be parking on Willow Lane, because there's no parking on Willow Lane, as far as I know.
Right.
So there are other possible locations for, could be on, it could be on Willow, what's that street, Koneho Ridge? That, that is a seldomly traveled location, that's a potential location. And I've seen hauling trucks being parked on, on Rancher Road early in the morning, so those are possible locations for truck staging while they're waiting for their haul.
And as far as the hauling away itself, would, would the trucks be more likely to go toward Hampshire Road or toward Thousand Oaks Boulevard?
That I cannot answer. So I will be inviting Deputy Director Heyder, oh, Nader. Thank you.
Heydari, just to respond to that question, that will be a condition of the grading permit, so the grading permit will not be issued until they provided a satisfactory haul route that is suitable and doesn't send it, all the trucks toward a school and so forth. All those things will be considered. Now, in this particular case, there's really only two options they have, which as you delineated, either they go to Thousand Oaks Boulevard or they go to Hampshire. It'd be more likely they would go to Hampshire because that will connect them to the freeway, unless, of course, that is, there's a nearby job site that needs fill that is in the direction of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard. But, you know, more likely it would be Hampshire, and that's probably where we would be encouraging them to go, but that'll get worked out before we issue any grading permit.
Okay, thanks for that. While we're on the subject of construction vehicles... While we're on the subject of construction vehicles, this is the same question we had at our last meeting about construction vehicles. This is Condition Forty-Eight. As Mr. Chua mentioned, most of Willow Lane is very narrow, there's no shoulder, let alone parking. Where will the construction vehicles park?
We're, we're finding that that's, you know, a more of a common theme as the city's getting more built out and there's less, you know, vacant parcels here and there for people to be able to operate out of and, and utilize. And in fact, the one on Duesenberg, which was used by many projects over the years, is now almost completed as an assisted living facility. So that one's going to be gone. Yeah, generally, projects like this have to, you know, self-contain or find, you know, make self-arrangements for parking off-site at a, at a, at a lot that they, they lease or rent. My understanding is that the applicant may have ownership of a nearby property. So he may be taking care of that already on, on his end. But those are arrangements that need to be made. There, there certainly will not be any ability to park on Willow Lane. Depending on the timing of the project, the city may be under construction on Willow Lane on our improvements as we go to widen the street and put sidewalks and bike lanes in. So there could be a lot of demand for parking nearby, but certainly no parking will be allowed.
Put even more pressure on,
Yeah, right.
On what little space there is there. I'll follow up with the applicant. I mean, the way we resolved this last time was to add a condition that required the applicant to put, to park on-site when feasible. So obviously, when there's grading going on, it's not possible to put vehicles there. But, but once that stage is done, and I hope that doesn't take too long, then there, there should be parking available. So I'll follow up with the applicant and ask about that. Just a couple of questions left. Going back to the trees in the oak and landmark tree permits, the mitigation measures are given, the three-to-one replacements, as Mr. Chua mentioned. I just want to verify, are, are all those replacement, the, the three-to-one replacements, are those all going on-site here? Or are any of the trees slated to go off-site somewhere else?
Yes, there will, all the replacement and mitigation trees will be planted on-site and will be incorporated in the landscape plans.
Excellent, thank you. And then the final thing is just a typo. In Condition One-O-Six of the SUP, this is on page twenty-seven, there's just a couple of extra words there. In the last sentence, if you just strike the words "of the..."
So Condition Number Twenty-Seven, remove-
One-O-Six, Condition One-O-Six.
Oh, Condition One-O-Six?
Yes, sir.
Remove the word "of the"? Okay, noted, noted, and we'll, we'll take care of that, Commissioner.
Just a typo.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing further.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other Commissioner questions?
I'm good, they got everything.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bus.
No, I was just saying, maybe they asked everything I was going to ask, so we're good.
That's a good problem to have when we're all looking at the, the documentation. I'll ask just a follow-up standard. Aside from the one comment we have in Supplement Two, did you receive any other comments from neighbors, citizens, anybody else with regard to this project that we haven't seen?
Not as of five o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, at this point, if there's no more questions from the commissioners, we will then now go to the applicant, and their representative will have fifteen minutes. For anybody speaking for the applicant or on their behalf, please make sure to state your name and city of residence. I believe we have James Sandifer. Mr. Sandifer, are you there?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, you're here, yeah. Yeah, James Sandifer, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. And staff pretty, laid out pretty well. We've been working together, as you said, for last year and a half since the continuance. And I think the staff has recommended approval, and we're, we're happy about that. We're ready to move on. And if there's any questions, I really have much to say, because it, Will's pretty much laid it all out. So if anyone has any questions, I'm here. And the architect, Neil Scribner, is right here, also.
Mr. Scribner, did you want to provide any further comments?
No, I would just answer questions if you have any.
I'll, just real quick one in terms of following up Mr. Chua's comment. Mr. Sandifer, you understand all the conditions and things that ultimately have been asked of you as part of this process, and you're agreeable with everything that Mr. Chua said, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll then turn over to Commissioner Questions.
I do have a couple of things to say, to answer a couple of questions.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I just remembered. The renderings, you know, we're talking about the trees and how fast they grow and, and all that from the freeway. First of all, the rendering is from the tenth lane over. That's, so that, that show, you'll see the most from there. When you're going southbound, you won't see anything. And the trees are different types of trees, so they grow at different rates. The oaks are the slowest growing, and then there's many other, several other types that grow much more quickly. And those are the ones along the street. So that, that will, you know, we didn't really want to cover the whole building up, but that's what's going to happen eventually. As far as the dirt, we, we purchased the lot at Skyline and Willow. That's just one lot over, and it's very low. It's always been very low, and we are going to be taking most of the dirt right there. So it's just going to be a hundred and fifty feet of trucking. So they'll be going and turning around and coming right back and collecting more dirt. The parking can be on the Skyline lot when we're grading, and then they'll be parking on-site up, on top after the grading is complete. And, yeah, that's, yeah, so I'm open for questions.
Okay, anything further before we go to Commissioner Questions? Mr. Sandifer, Mr. Scribner, anything further you guys want to add before I go to Commissioner Questions?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. All right, so let's open up the Commissioner Questions. Commissioners, who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Go ahead, Mr. Bus.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bus.
All right, so, Mr. Sandifer, thank you very much for, for coming back to us after a year and a half. My biggest question, and I remember that you had that lot over on Skyline, and I remember that was your tent over there. I remember we were talking about like a, you were, you were thinking at one point of, of building a, a structure to just funnel the dirt over across that way almost. But it sounds like you've got it in hand, you're just going to, going to transport it around across Willow. My only other question for you is, are you in contact with the people that are building the residential homes to your, to the south of you? Because it sounds like you haven't worked out for brush clearance and all that, but I just wanted to make sure that, that that's all been communicated between, between you and, and that adjoining property.
Yes, yeah, we actually talked at the last meeting and met there, and he was there at the meeting. And we've, we've spoken since, and, you know, that's not a problem with the clearing the reeds. And, and he's hoping to go fairly soon also. We don't know how fast it's going to go, but, so he'll be building and clearing and grading also.
All right, that, that's, that's the only question I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bus. Commissioner Newman, did you have questions?
Just one, thanks. And, Mr. Sandifer, thank you to you and your staff for working with the city to bring this project into compliance. Much appreciated. My question is regarding the lot at Skyline and Willow Lane. It is, it is below the street level. It's, I don't know, eight feet, maybe ten feet. I don't know if it's that much, but there, there is an indentation there. So, so, once the thirty-two thousand five hundred cubic yards of dirt is moved, how do you anticipate that lot would look? Would it be level with the street? Would it be above the street level? How, how roughly do you think that would work out?
It'll be above the street level. And the street varies a lot. Like I said, it's maybe four feet low in some places and eight feet in others, because Skyline and Willow dip and rise around this lot. So we'll be higher, we, we need to be for flood control, we need to be higher from, than the street anyway. So we'll be, we'll be higher. There'll be, there'll be a lot of dirt going in there to fill it up, just to get it to where it needs to be, to be for housing. We're, we're planning three houses there.
Can you give an estimate of what's the highest point where, where it's higher than the street level?
We may be six feet higher in the low areas where the dips are.
And that would be a maximum overage above the street level?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Commissioner McMahon, you have any questions?
I do not have any questions. They've all been answered for me. Thank you.
I just have one follow-up. And, Mr. Sandifer, Mr. Scribner, I want to say thank you actually for working with the staff when the continuance occurred. I was, I know there was a little concern and frustration, but I was really happy to see that you kind of worked with the staff, and you guys have worked out a lot of the issues, and that's, that's great to see, because that makes our job a little easier in terms of figuring out how to, how to move forward. The one thing I wanted to ask about was the, the dirt transportation. Are, it sounds like, I mean, these trucks aren't going to be parked very long then if it's really just going back and forth. What, what is actually your intent? Is it to get that done in a certain, a few weeks? Or what, what is the plan with regard to the dirt movement?
Well, my plan, you know, we have to, we're widening the street a lot. You know, it's twelve to fifteen feet wider, and that's where the retaining wall is going to go. So that's why we need a retaining wall. There's no retaining wall there now. So we'll be widening the street. And in that, what, what I'm looking at is the trucks will just pull up on our new site, new area that we graded and load right there, so they don't even have to go up the driveway. They'll load right there, right, drive right across the street, dump it, come back, probably go up to Caneo School and, and do a U-turn, and then get in line again. And it should, it should go quickly and be not much, we'll, we'll probably have to have traffic people there, you know, to make sure. But they hardly were going to have to even go on the street. It's just, it's just going to be a, right down this, you know, few hundred feet.
And, and just to make sure that I'm clear, and this may not be necessarily to you or maybe to staff, but the fact that he's moving that dirt to that new location, does that require any additional permits or things that we need to do or the staff needs to do?
Commissioner, or Chair Lanson. Staff did talk to the applicant about this potentially moving dirt from the proposed site to the Singing Family Residential Site. We did not include it as part of this request, because it would require Planning Commission approval and could require additional environmental analysis. That was not performed. So at this point, the dirt is not, it's not being considered at that site, moved to that site.
Okay, so that will be something-
We'd have to evaluate further, yeah.
Okay. And somebody's dog is having a good time with the hearing, we can hear. I have no further questions. Any other questions from the commissioners?
If I may, Chair, just, excuse me. I think Commissioner Newman made a comment about Condition Number Forty-Eight, and he made a request that it might be modified in a way to, and this was briefly discussed. I just want to make sure we have a condition, if it's going to be modified, that everybody understands that condition is modified and understands the term. If, and I, if Mr. Newman is okay with it, I can, I think I understand what he's trying to do, and so I would read a modification to Condition Number Forty-Eight to ensure that the applicant is aware of this condition. I think he already kind of commented-
I haven't actually requested the condition, but, but I'll go ahead and make that request now.
Okay, so it would just be in addition to Condition Number Forty-Eight, and that would read, after grading has been completed and approved, and if reasonably feasible, applicants shall have construction workers or construction-related vehicles park on the project site. Is that close enough, Mr. Newman? To what you were intending?
Yes, that sounds fine. Thank you.
Okay, okay. So then it would be for applicant to understand that and be okay with that condition.
Mr. Sandifer, is that-
As long as it's okay with the applicant.
Yes, and that, I'll go to Mr. Sandifer, since we're still on your actual time. Is that an acceptable condition to you?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any other Commissioner questions? All right, so we'll go to the next process, which normally is the public comment part. And we have two people that signed up to speak. I'll announce their names. I don't believe they're on the line, but I'm going to announce their names just to make sure. The first speaker we had was Russ Bauer. Mr. Bauer, are you there? Nope. Mr. Bauer actually submitted Packet Two, which was an email, which I'm assuming is what he intended to say. So we'll consider that as part of the process. The second speaker was Bob Lotto, who I don't believe is on the line either. So that will be it for public comment. Go back to staff. Mr. Chua, did you have anything further to add?
No, we don't have anything to add at this point.
Okay, and then finally, Mr. Sandifer and Mr. Scribner, is there anything else you wanted to advise us about before we, we close the public part of the hearing?
I think we're good.
All right, so at that point, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open the matter up to commissioners for comments or a motion.
If I may have the floor, I would move that we approve special use permit two zero zero nine dash seven oh four oh nine, oak tree permit two zero one one dash seven oh one six four, and landmark tree permit two zero one eight dash seven zero two seven one, based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the resolution, including the change that was just made tonight.
You know, it's great with this new process, I have to look into the, the outside and hope somebody's going to help me with the motion. Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. That was very nice of you. Any other comments from commissioners before we put up for the vote? Not hearing any? Go ahead and prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Bus?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
No, he's, he's recused.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cohen is rescued, recused. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one Commissioner, sorry, four to zero. Commissioner Cohen is recused.
And as this was a determination, I have to read the appeal period. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within ten days. Commissioner Cohen, if you're listening, you can come back into the process. We'll go to Item Eight, which is Department Reports. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Chair. We do not have any this evening.
Then Item Nine, Commission Comments and A B one, two, three, four reports. Any Commissioner comments?
A brief comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to commend to the public this article, which appeared in the Los Angeles Times just after we met. I can't believe it's four months ago. This is from a fellow in urban planning at Chapman University, and it is discussing why overall death rates from the coronavirus have been so much lower in California compared with the New York, New Jersey area, and correlating that with housing density. And I hope as we consider future applications that involve very dense housing, that we do consider the health and safety of residents in, in our discussions, because unfortunately, it's going to be something that we're going to have to deal with, at least for the foreseeable future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Any other comments from the commissioners? I'll just briefly say that unfortunately, it looks like we had three hundred and eighty-eight new cases of the virus over the weekend, which means we are going backwards. Unfortunately, the, for us to get off the watch list, there's six factors that need to be evaluated and we need to pass. The one we're not passing is the infection rate, and we need to keep it under, I think, sixty a day. It's, over the weekend, we had three hundred and eighty-eight. So, again, not trying to be political or, either way, but wear these things. Stay six to ten feet away, stay out of groups, wash your hands, and try not to get the virus, because as soon as you do that- because as soon as you do that, we can get back in and have our businesses open, we can get back to our lives. So as soon as everybody follows the rule, everybody can get their lives back. Any other Commissioner comments? Go to Staff Update. Mr. Parker is entering updates.
Just briefly, for our next meeting on September twenty-first, there's tentatively three items on that agenda, so it'll be a busy night, lots of business to take care of. Other than that, we don't have any additional announcements.
One last thing, I just want to say the staff has done an amazing job. This is, this, I thought was going to be a horrendous process to deal with in terms of this virus. You guys have done a fantastic job. It's like this is the same meeting we normally have, so thanks to everybody for that. With that, we'll adjourn to September twenty... Mr. Newman? Is that you?
Here, here.
Oh, here again. With that, we'll adjourn to September twenty-first at six o'clock PM. Good night, Thousand Oaks.
Night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Night. Nice talk, everybody.